Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the meeting of the Clackamas County Commissioners. Mr. Crump, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, we have County Council Steven Madcor here, and also, serving as your clerk, Kevin Moss. I'll start with the roll. Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savas?
Here.
Chair Humberson?
Here. I'd like to announce that Commissioner Bernard will not be here today. He is in Salem, testifying, as he has been requested to do, on a land use bill. So I will be chairing today. Would you please stand and follow me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first order of business today is citizens' communication. We'll call up two people at a time. The first two people today are Darlene Atkinson and Diane L. Gruber. Please identify yourselves and what community you are from. Thank you.
I'm Darlene Atkinson. I'm from Boring. Good morning, Commissioners. I am back for a follow-up from last week, where I appeared here to testify in regards to Chair Bernard's Facebook account, Clackamas County Chair Jim Bernard. I didn't come for dialogue last week. I came to deliver a presentation. I brought with me and presented before each of you a packet of exhibits. The exhibits were screenshots taken by me from that Facebook account. I appreciate the Commissioners Humberson, Fisher, and Schrader. Each took time to speak with me following the meeting. I asked that each of you read through the information in the packets and reflect on it. I asked you to consider the activity and whether it was representative of leadership in a nonpartisan position. I pointed out to each of you one comment made under Chair Bernard's apology post to Julie Parrish that sought to further denigrate her. I would like to visit that particular comment today. I read the Facebook apology, and I made a comment on it that expressed my own personal feelings. My comment contained nothing derogatory, yet Mr. Bernard chose to remove it. That led me to watching the page, as well as to look through the page to see what other types of posts Mr. Bernard had previously made. The comment I was referring to is on page 2 of your exhibits, and it was highlighted in yellow. It's the one that said, "I think Julie Parrish is sleazy and does not deserve the respect of voters. She has consistently been a blowhard for conservatives." Chair Bernard had just posted an apology to Julie, and a second post in which he described the numerous personal situations he was dealing with, and that he was sorry, but he was angry. He also suggests that constituents who were critical give him a break. Here's where I have a problem. On that page, Chair Bernard apologized to Julie for his conduct. He failed to include an apology to his constituency, all Clackamas County residents and voters. Instead, he removed negative comments that expressed disgust or an attempt to hold him accountable. I presented this to the three of you, and asked if that demonstrated good leadership of a nonpartisan board of Commissioners. I asked each of you if Chair Bernard was truly remorseful. Why would he allow that particular comment to remain? I mean, if he's going to violate the First Amendment, why not apply it with equality and fairness? Why not be an equal opportunity violator of the Constitution? He actually had a real moment to show leadership by removing it, or at the very least, addressing it. I included a comment that he did make on another unrelated post, where he expresses that he cannot believe how terrible the comments are. I couldn't believe that he allowed such a terrible comment to remain. My only conclusion is, he allowed it to remain because it supported his original attack on Julie Parrish. He allowed it so that he wouldn't upset those who expressed support and sympathy. Obviously, those who didn't, he had no use for. You can easily judge the character of a man by how he treats those who can do nothing for him. Malcolm Forbes. And quoting from Chair Bernard's now deactivated account, "If you don't like government, change it. Run for office." I did. Perhaps instead of seeking office to change government, one should seek office to serve people, all of the people. And I thank you for your time today, and listening to my concerns.
I'm Diane L. Gruber, a 30-year resident of West Lynn. I'm a semi-retired attorney, and I'm a writer for two blogs, as well as a resident of District 37, Julie Parrish's district. Hello to all of you, especially to Mr. Savas, who wasn't able to make it last week. I will not repeat my remarks from last week, except a very few lines from the Resolution 2017-93, which was signed by Jim Bernard last August. Quote, "Whereas the county acknowledges the diverse political views of all persons and believes everyone, no matter what their political affiliation, should be treated with respect," except, of course, for a state representative who honored the citizens of Oregon by fighting for their right to vote on a tax measure. Quote, "Now, therefore, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners affirms the value of non-partisanship in its deliberations and determinations, and vows to respectfully take into consideration differing political perspectives on proposed policy," unquote. Except, of course, when we want to take more, especially when you want to take more money away from hard-working Oregonians without their vote. "Screw you, Julie Parrish," Mr. Bernard wrote publicly. "You put Measure 101 on the ballot, and you lost. The same old argument that we had enough money if we cut budgets. Cut you from the legislature." Unquote. In just one short remark, we learned that Mr. Bernard not only disrespects a longtime representative, my representative, Julie Parrish, but he disrespects the voters of District 37, which makes up a significant portion of Clackamas County. It isn't bad enough that the county chair publicly mistreats women, but the two women on this board are enabling him, supporting him, and thereby encouraging him. Mrs. Schrader voiced her support for Mr. Bernard at last week's meeting. As I recall, Ms. Fisher did not make any remarks. On January 26, 2017, just days after President Trump was inaugurated, and just days before she was appointed by this board, appointed, to fill a vacancy, Sonia Fisher held a meeting of attorneys in her office to discuss the horrors of Hillary Clinton's loss, and the horrors of Donald Trump's win for the presidency. She spent almost two hours hyper-criticizing President Trump because of his alleged mistreatment of women. She also alleged to be a spokeswoman for all women. Nevertheless, Ms. Fisher publicly showed her support of Jim Bernard's nastiness by releasing the following statement, quote, "Jim, I understand how stressed we all have been. Measure 101 sent us all into a tailspin, worrying about how we would pick up the pieces." And I move on here, because I'm out of time. And when you add all that stress on to your personal struggle, I suggest we move on from this issue. I call on Ms. Fisher to stop being a hypocrite, stop supporting a bully, and stand up for women. Stop supporting Mr. Bernard.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is Les Poole and Tim Lucier. Is that correct?
Good morning. I think it's a good morning in a lot of places. It's a little rough here. Actually, it's very rough here. Les Poole, I live in Gladstone. I'm here almost every week, and I too am one of the people that's been attacked by Jim Bernard, and I believe it was for political purposes. I won't get into the details of it, except to say that shortly after, around the time the 2016 primary ballots went out, when Commissioner Savas, and Commissioner Bernard, and former Chair Ludlow were all vying for the nonpartisan chair seat in the primary, Mr. Bernard, it wasn't so much, this isn't where he said, "Screw you." I guess I'm not a woman, so he couldn't say that to me. But instead, at the end of a meeting, in Commissioner comments, long after I left, he made all kinds of statements, and tried to basically blame me for the failings of the tree ordinance. He tried to hang the library on me. He came up with an interesting spin on how the light rail got to Oak Grove, and, of course, through all of that, through all of that, I never got an apology for any of those misrepresentations. Not one, except he kind of sorta, he kind of sorta apologized for misrepresenting my involvement in the tree ordinance after I issued a public records request here at the county, and I requested any documentation that I had any involvement in that issue at all. And, of course, nothing came up. So he apologized for that, and he said, "Everything else is true." Well, everything else isn't true. And I'm not going to get into the details of how gut-wrenching it was to come back here, and how outrageous his conduct has been on numerous occasions. There are 400,000 people in Clackamas County. Those 400,000 people need someone who is reasonable, unbiased, and puts their well-being above, above their own. By the way, it's really unfortunate that Paul's had, his wife has had health issues. He hasn't been here for all of the fun we're having. I say that cynically. How else can I say it? And it's unfortunate that you've come back to this. But this, like when I was attacked, like when Mr. Langdon here was thrown out because he tried to do a silent protest, because Chair Bernard at the time, acting Chair Bernard at the time, started the clock early on him, and all Richard was asking for was to reset the clock so he could speak. And Jim wouldn't do it. This is a bullheaded guy, okay? And it's really obvious. And we can continue to make excuses for it, but the public isn't buying it. There's a history here. And, Mr. Humberson, I think you look good up there, and maybe you'll be our new chair. I wish I was here so we could talk about the important issues, but right now, this is the issue. This isn't going away. I know I'm out of time, but I want to say one last thing, and that is, unlike the light rail, I did not go out and invite people here. You've got people emailing, calling. You've got people showing up that weren't affiliated with any of the past issues, and never had any contact with me, so I'm not trying to give a disclaimer here. I'm simply saying, there is a growing number of people from the past and from now that want this man to resign, and they have a damn good reason for it. Thank you. I need to go sit down.
Go ahead.
Did you speak to me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. So I'm presenting about HR, excuse me, your memo, 2017-93, which I believe that the Commission should today reaffirm, and I would like to see each of the Commissioners reaffirm and sign it personally. 2017-93 is signed by Chair Bernard this last fall, which says that you, in a nonpartisan capacity, will treat people not only with respect, but in a, to respect their diverse political views, no matter what their political affiliation should be, regardless of race, color, national origin, immigration, refugee status, religion, gender identity. County officials will work constructively and collaboratively to solve, to lead improved outcomes. Now, Darlene presented the case last week about what Chair Jim Bernard did when he attacked Julie Parrish, unprovoked. I reiterated that statement last week, because I thought it was appalling, that Chair Bernard used a Facebook page called "Clackamas County Chair Jim Bernard." And then, when he attacked Julie Parrish, he made an excuse after with another post. And then, Les Poole asked for an apology from the stage. Then, on Friday night, he made another excuse about how his family health had issues. During that time, as Darlene has stated, Chair Bernard censored comments from the page, banned criticism from citizens when they critiqued that page, and then he deleted the Facebook fan page last weekend. During that time, Sonia Fisher did comment on his personal fan page, or his personal friend page, as Darlene stated earlier, defending him. Martha Schrader, for two weeks in a row, defended him. Last week, she called him "a good man, Charlie Brown." There's no excuse for Jim Bernard to attack women like this. There's no excuse for him to attack anybody like this. And you can say, "Oh, I talked to Martha, or I talked to Julie, and she's fine," and you can filibuster and try to fill the time, but this is an embarrassment to Clackamas County. We have major issues going on. This is a sanctuary county in Clackamas County, according to Craig Roberts in Public Records. This is a sanctuary county, according to what I've heard. This Commission has pushed forward with Chair Jim Bernard. Well, and if it's not, you can shake your head, Sonia. You can reaffirm that you're following federal law. But there's lawsuits going on. There's people being let out of prison, or, excuse me, county jail, because of not abiding by federal law. You know, whether or not Clackamas can't do that because they were sued, and they have to treat illegal or citizens the same. We have serious issues here. So if we're violating federal law, Attorney General Jeff Sessions needs to know that. If you're trying to toll 205 from Wilsonville to the Columbia River on I-5 and 205, like ODOT's planning with House Bill 2017, that apparently Bernard's working in the Legislature today, he's not here leading our county. He's an embarrassment down there. Is he going to attack Julie Parrish again today? We don't know. He could attack somebody else from his official fan page, his personal Twitter page, which he doesn't use anymore. He deleted his official campaign website recently as well, so he's covering evidence. So if there are lawsuits, and last week I asked if he's an employee, I'd like to know Ken and Paul, since I didn't ask you if you're an employee. Martha and Sonia, nice enough, last week said they're employees. So he committed harassment. If you guys are employees, I'd like to know. You get a paycheck from Clackamas County. The HR office wouldn't tell me. There's legal counsel, I can tell here today, finally. So if you're an employee, I'd like you to call in Jim Bernard to resign. He's an employee. He gets his paycheck from Clackamas County. He needs to resign. He's an embarrassment to Clackamas County. This Commission has become an embarrassment. Clackamas County is an embarrassment. And you violated the harassment policies. If you don't live up to your code, if you don't live up to your memo, then we're an embarrassment, and you didn't follow through, and demanding a man stand by his word on the policy memos, on the policy of spirit. So please, call in Jim Bernard to resign. Have a vote in no confidence. We need to move on without Jim Bernard.
Thank you for your testimony. We will move on. The next item is a public hearing.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have a public hearing this morning. I'm going to invite Mr. Nate Boderman up to the dais to discuss this with you. This is a public hearing to consider first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 11.01 of the County Code. Mr. Boderman?
Good morning, Commissioners. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel here. The item I have for you this morning is for purposes of amending Chapter 11.01 of the County Code, which relates to the review of Platts and surveys. Right now, Chapter 11.01 is administered by our county surveyor. It contains only limited standards and reviews used by the surveyor for review of these types of submittals, again, Platts and surveys primarily. Interestingly enough, Chapters 1105 and 1107 of the zoning and development ordinance contain the remainder of the standards associated with the county surveyor-administered survey and plat standards. So because it's the Planning Division that initially takes in Platts and surveys and reviews them for land use compatibility on the front end, at one point, once upon a time, maybe it made sense to have all those located in the zoning and development ordinance, but as it stands today, the county surveyor administers all those technical plat standards. And so, we think it's more appropriate to take those from the zoning and development ordinance and place those in the County Code. Again, by removing the technical plat and survey review standards, we think it'll eliminate confusion on behalf of the public, for which, which set of criteria apply, whether it's the zoning and development ordinance, or whether it's the County Code. And again, it'll further promote sort of planning's efforts to consolidate and clarify the zoning and development ordinance. They go through their audit project every single year. It's on their work program. What you'll see here in a couple months is a companion revision to the zoning and development ordinance to actually remove those provisions. And so, because procedurally, these have to proceed on different tracks. What we're doing now for first and second reading is making the addition to 11.01. What you'll see in a couple months is the removal from the ZDO of the companion provisions. So it's staff's recommendation that you hold a public hearing on this this morning. Advance it to first reading, and then schedule this for second reading at the appropriate time. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Boderman. Do the Commissioners have any clarifying questions to the presenters?
No. I just want to make a comment. I appreciate making things easier and simpler and consolidated. As a lawyer that gets frustrated in the practice of law of having to look here, and look there, and look all over, to have a perspective or a process, I appreciate the hard work that's gone into clarifying these. I think it'll make it easier for the customers we serve, so thank you.
Paul?
Yeah. Well, my question's really not for Nate, but it's more for the administrator, and that is, I know we're on this, we're on a five-year plan to update all of our code ordinances and so forth, and so this is part of that, in one way or another. How, what's our progress report on this? I think we're probably going to go past the five years on this cleanup. Is that correct?
You know, I'm gonna have to, yeah. I mean, this has been going on for a long time. It's a, it's a work in progress, but, and I can't give you the sort of update at this moment with regard to the next iteration of this, but we'd be happy to put this together for a work session for you in the coming weeks.
Yeah, I just want to, we probably should have a progress report. It's been five years, I know. And I'd certainly like to know, looking ahead, looking forward, you know, when we might see some, you know, this wind down, get some closure.
Yeah. I know you'll be seeing a package of amendments come forward in April, I believe it is, and then the next round will be coming either late summer, early fall. And so, I know planning has had a chance to make up a little bit of progress. It was set behind, of course, by some of the other initiatives that went on with, you know, zoning for marijuana and things like that. Accessory dwelling units are going to be sort of a hot topic coming up as well. And so, some of this is just really dictated by, you know, other priorities that arise as they go through. And as you suggest, it was supposed to be a five-year project originally. I think it's, you know, we're sort of on track for more of like a seven-year project with these additions, but you will see a couple packets come forward here this next calendar year.
Right. I do recognize that the marijuana was unforeseen at the time when we set that five-year goal. I do know that's been a tremendous setback, but I just want to know informational-wise going ahead, so thank you.
Seeing no other questions, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak to the issue. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask to have the clerk read the ordinance by title only, please.
You'll want a motion first.
Excuse me. You're correct. Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to have the ordinance read by title only. Thank you.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to read the ordinance by title only. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would the clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be ordinance number 01-2018, amending Chapter 11.01 of the County Code.
Thank you. Let's see. Follow my script here. Would you, have you assigned a number and an ordinance to the ordinance? I didn't catch it.
Yes, it is 01-2018.
Do the Commissioners have any proposed changes, or additions, or amendments to the ordinance? Hearing none, the second reading will be Thursday, February 22, 2018, at a regular scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. And the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda by title?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. On today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have approval of a cooperation agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives for the NHA Annie Ross House Emergency Shelter in Milwaukee; approval of home loan documents with Northwest Housing Alternatives for the NHA Campus Family Housing Apartments in Milwaukee; approval of a service agreement with Geno Pharmacy partnering with Clackamas County Health Centers Division in participation with pharmacy services agreement at Beaver Creek Clinic; approval of a service agreement with Geno Pharmacy partnering with Clackamas County Health Centers Division in participation with pharmacy services agreement at Hilltop Clinic; under our finance department, approval of a resolution acknowledging expenditures in excess of appropriations and financial statement findings for fiscal year 2017, and describing corrective action in accordance with ORS 297.466; under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes; under community corrections, approval of a local grant agreement, number JR-17-003, between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Subrecipient Las Ninos Quinton for community-based victim services programs; approval of local government grant agreement, number JR17-003, between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Subrecipient Children Center for community-based victim services programs; and approval of local grant agreement, JR17-003, between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Subrecipient Safety Compass for community-based victim services programs; under human resources, approval of deferred compensation for 57 retirement plan document changes; and under county council, approval of goods and services contract with specialized technical asset restoration LLC for restoration of materials damaged in flood at Clackamas County Law Library; and finally, under our development agency, approval of two non-exclusive water line easements provided to Clackamas River Water; approval of two non-exclusive sanitary sewer easements provided to Clackamas County Service District Number One. And that concludes this consent agenda. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Do the Commissioners wish to remove or pull any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the county administrator update.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple of items. Of course, you know, one of the things I always like to talk about here is what's going on with Clackamas County Dog Services, and wanted to mention that we held one of our most popular free monthly microchipping clinics here this last January. The event, a couple of weeks ago, saw some 53 licenses issued, 43 rabies shots, and 31 microchips put into place. And the clinics are run through a partnership with Good Neighbor Vet, and they're held on the fourth Saturday of each month. We really wanted to thank that organization for all the help they've done to make this happen, and the successful interest in this program. Then I also wanted to share with you some really good work on the part of our motor carrier safety team. They monitor commercial truck traffic for safety violations, and they conducted an effort in partnership with the Oregon City Police on Highway 213 over a three-hour period here. The officers that they worked with made some 10 commercial truck stops, conducted some nine inspections, issued eight warnings, and two citations. There were two trucks that were placed out of service for safety violations. And, of course, these actions are done to help make sure our streets and highways are safe for everyone. And we have previously worked with the Wilsonville Police Department, doing something very similar there. It's great, great work, and it's good, it's a good partnership between our transportation and development staff, and the county sheriff, and local police departments to carry out this work together. And finally, I wanted to share with you a story, a touching story, from our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department. This involves one of our public health nurses who's involved with home visitation. She was at the She was at the rural home of a client, who was a young woman with two children. And while she was there, she observed that the home's pipes had frozen, that the wood stove was only providing, was the only heat that was being provided in what was a very poorly insulated home. And she also noticed the young woman's baby was so cold that the child's feet actually appeared almost purplish. The other child was also sick. So upon leaving the house, she immediately contacted our weatherization folks to follow up, and the follow-up was almost immediate. I mean, they deemed the request a priority, and folks were on site by 11:00 a.m. the very next day, ultimately helping to give the family a warm home and assuring to prevent more illnesses in the future. So a quick shout-out to the staff of our Public Health and Weatherization Divisions for making this happen so quickly. And it shows how our services can help have a significant impact on the lives of our citizens and residents. Wanted to share that.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp. The next item on our agenda is Commissioner Communications Updates. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Humberston, and thank you for filling in for Chair Bernard today. Appreciate that. I have been a county commissioner for a year, so this is my anniversary, and I look back at when I started this position with my hopes, aspirations for how we would proceed to tackle the challenging issues facing the county, and I look at where we are. So it is a point in time, and I must say, I have been, there's some things that have very much surprised me that I did not expect. And one of them, the most compelling part of this job that I've done for the last year is the camaraderie that we have experienced as a board. I didn't expect that that would be the case. I didn't expect that we would listen, treat each other with respect, and value the opinions as well as we have. And I must say that I'm proud to be part of this board. I'm proud to be part of a board that listens to the different perspectives and that we are able to conduct our business, our county business, with respect of one another. I really thought that I was entering the lion's den when I took this position, although I knew, based on my relationships with all of you and with Chair Bernard, that I had good personal relationships with each of you. We've taken a step back with Chair Bernard's comments on his Facebook page. I do not endorse his comments or support those comments, but I have forgiven him because it's best for the county for us to move forward. And I'm really hopeful that we are able to do that respectfully and honorably because the issues that are before us are just too great. And I want us to continue the success that we've had with, we've resolved the urban and rural reserve issue, we resolved the lawsuit with the city of Gladstone, we have listened to our residents regarding governance with Wes, we have been open to constituents. I've gone to many community meetings where people are just so happy that we're there. Chair Humberston and I have been all over the county. Sometimes we go together, sometimes we go separately. It's been nice to connect, and it's my opinion that the citizens feel listened to. And I'm hoping that everyone collectively can look at the good work we've been doing for the last year and support us in continuing the incredible challenges ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Savas?
Well, I, thank you. Commissioner Humberston, I want to just say that it was kind of surreal for me on Thursday, two Thursday mornings ago, when I was sitting in the waiting room while my wife was having her third shoulder procedure to get the information and the text and stuff regarding the Facebook post. So it was very unfortunate at that time to be coping with that all real. So to be back here today after watching at least the last meeting, I should have watched all of it, and I should have watched the last, the first meeting, but it's kind of surreal being here for seven years and seeing some of the difficult issues that have been before us and some of the passion that's been in the room for a whole myriad of issues and so forth. So I can certainly understand where a number of those people here who spoke today, who spoke last Thursday, and the first Thursday when this all came about. So I can, I can understand and relate to those concerns. I was really kind of taken aback when the pointed out last Thursday about the resolution that was spoken to, the resolution that I kind of put forward.
Yeah.
And I think we, I think it's fair to say that we support that. I would certainly be happy to sign that at any time and also sign our, the document that cites our values, our called spirit, you know, our core principles, and stand by those. And so, and I don't think that we condone any kind of behavior that violates that. And I think, I speak for myself, I'm sure that we all feel that way. So it's unfortunate, and it's very difficult for us as professionals to be up here knowing that we have a lot of work to get done, and we got to do that and treat each other with respect as best as possible. And I think we're, we've collectively, for the most part, in the last year or so, have done a great job with that. So I'm hoping maybe we can, as we move forward, take some of the energies that are out there and direct them towards problems that we need to solve and work through. And the tolling, one, the I-205, the Sunrise Corridor, talk of a regional bond for transportation, talking about this car, perhaps this carbon tax legislation. There are a number of means in which, including the bill that already passed the legislature, which mandates really the tolling, is really, unfortunately, doesn't have a, it's not a decision that the voters have. I think myself and Martha, we're at a CPO meeting on Monday night, and the question came up, do we get to vote for this on the tolling? I go, well, it's a legislative decision, the legislature made that decision, and now it's law. So we don't have a, we don't have a, unfortunately, we're not in a position to make a decision on that. Maybe the best we can do is shape that to that we can actually get some benefit out of that, unless the state determines that there's a good reason not to toll or put a tolling on there. So I think we're making the best out of that, but the biggest part that gives me a lot of grief, concern, anguish to some degree, is how much effort we have put forth on trying to get 205 done, and like trying to get the Sunrise Corridor, which is now a 38-year-old project. You know, and I, I've, I wanted to report, had I been here and my wife not having her situation, I would have reported on that Thursday morning, the result of some meetings that took place in which certain elected officials in the region have made comments that they don't want to see any more lanes at all in our region, which includes Clackamas County. Quite opposite of what our position is, and I want to appreciate my colleagues, all five of us, who sent a letter responding to that sentiment to Metro and to, to ODOT and to others that. We really feel that we, we want really essentially our fair share. You know, I think other parts of the region and north of here are fat and happy with substantial amount of road networks and, and capacity and lanes and so forth. And we're kind of, we're kind of lean over here. We're on the thin side. We have this, the only part of, the only two-lane section of, the narrowest part of 205 has to be in Clackamas County, and the only unfunded sunrise-sunset corridor is the Sunrise Corridor. We've been short-changed, and we, we need to catch up, and that funding needs to be there. So, you know, there was a, as we said at the chamber meeting last Wednesday, we need to get our fair share in this region. So I think that's extremely critical, and I hope we can channel some of our energies towards that in light of all these other takings, what's potential takings, takings of a regional bond with no commitment thus far from those people convening that, that they're going to fund 205. Talk about a carbon tax with no commitment towards putting that towards transportation solutions. Tolling, no commitment that we're going to direct those monies towards solutions. I'm feeling very uneasy, and I keep on saying that because I, and I will continue that because the messaging that I wanted to share, what I wanted to share two Thursdays ago was that very sentiment that I got back within just a few days earlier, that there, now we are fighting a political battle in which those that have a lot of capacity don't want us to, Clackamas County have our fair share. And I think we need to take the energies we have and direct that towards that. So I, I plan on being far more outspoken about that, and I'm frankly pretty upset that when this came up at a, at a regional meeting here, we did not get a commitment for 205 after all of this. After all of these funding mechanisms of taking some monies, there's still not a commitment. That's unacceptable. And I think that we've got to, we've got to stand up. Yeah, thank you. We have to stand up for our county, and we just have to speak that. And I don't, we don't need to be derogatory, we don't need to be really negative about this, but we need to stand up for what we got and be as diplomatic as possible. And I appreciate, again, all five of us have signed, or not signed, but approved that letter, that message, but I'm, unfortunately, after that letter went out, still, we have messaging coming out from, from the north part of this region that, you know, they don't want, they don't want lanes, they don't want our, I don't sense that there's any commitment. So we need to be, we need to, now that the legislature, and here's the other thing that has took place in this two-weeker surreal activity. The other thing is, the legislature's convened, they're, they're in session, and, and we got a promise, those of you remember, that we got a promise to Senator Devlin that I-205 would be addressed, and that ODOT would report in February to, to the legislature, to, to the state, that what the estimate was to repair 205. And that, that, at that point in time, that some direction would be given. So we need to be down there advocating for that. Commissioner Bernard is advocating on another issue, but we need to be down there. Now's the time to speak, and, and we just got to need to get this done. I think we need to be far more outspoken than we have been. So that's what I have for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah. Well, you're a solid good man, and thank you for fighting for us for the dollars that we are due for I-205, because I do think it's an issue, it's been an issue for a long time. And I think that hopefully this year I'll be helping to push back a little bit at impact as well. Just a few things I wanted to talk about. I attended the State of the City with, Milwaukee State of the City. I know Commissioner Humberston was there with me, and Mayor Gamba gave a great speech. In particular, he gave a shout-out to the folks from our Human Services that have helped them with their housing initiative, and that is Director Rich, Rich Swift, our Housing Authority Director Chuck Robbins, and our kind of guru of county housing, who is really the community contact, Fahid Brown. I personally also like to give a shout-out to Brenda German and Erica Silver. They have been working on housing initiatives as well, and appreciate the fact that we are now coordinating with Milwaukee, and we're working now to even more thoroughly coordinate with Oregon City, two of our municipalities, where I hope we can come up with frameworks that really take a look at how we can, how we can add capacity with our cities dealing with the housing crisis that we're dealing with. I also attended the Sunnyside CPO with Commissioner Savas. It was a great meeting. Appreciate all your knowledge about the, about the transportation piece. That was what folks there were mainly interested in, because it's kind of a congested area, so it's always on their mind, I think, so that's a good thing. At the national level, I was on a phone call with the National Association of Counties, Community and Workforce and Economic Development Board. I serve as the Chair of the Subcommittee on Economic Development, and we are putting three resolutions forward to Congress. Basically, we are actually asking Congress to keep renewing housing and human development dollars, particularly the CDPG grants that we get, community development block grants, because they are one of our finest tools that we use to go ahead and leverage dollars for housing. We also are asking them to continue the dollars that have been set aside in Housing and Human Development, HUD, for affordable housing stock. And we are continuing to ask for support for the new market tax credit. So every year this March, I'll go to Washington, D.C. We will formally adopt these three resolutions, and we will send them to Congress. And I forget, there's one more. It was Ag and Rural Affairs, and it's, it's dollars so farmers can provide housing for migrant workers within a 15-mile radius. And our Ag and Rural Affairs Committee at the national level has asked us, as a, as a co-committee, to help support that as well. So that's what's going on there. Had an opportunity to meet with Shelley Perini, who has been working with Dan Chandler, to pull together a high-level task force to develop a housing strategy. And that is really, we hope, a way to bring in not the, not the usual suspects, but add to our advocacy work and have our advocates, who've already been on the ground, introducing them, getting us connected to other folks that can help move that agenda along. Last night, I was at the Oregon City Commission where I voted to, where I didn't vote, but I testified in favor of resolution number 1804, and this was essentially adopting the Riverwalk Master Plan for the Legacy Project here in Oregon City. And the other thing is, I have gone out and about with public health, visiting families. I've asked my assistant Emily to make that happen again. I like to go to visit the families, and maybe Commissioner Fisher, you'd like to come, too.
I've done that. It's really wonderful to go with our health visiting.
I did it a few years ago, and I also particularly like the programs they have in hospitals for identifying at-risk mothers. So I'm going to try, hopefully in the next few months, to get out and about with that. So, okay. Arts and culture activities in the county? Soup Night with Maggie Stuckey. Portland author Maggie Stuckey presents Soup Night, an evening of books, good food, and community building. The audience will sample delicious homemade soup while Maggie shares stories of the Soup Night tradition, in which neighbors all around the country are creating a real sense of community through the age-old idea of getting together for a simple meal on a regular basis. Friday, February 9th, 6:30 to 9:30, Sandy Public Library. Portland Classic Guitar Series, Robert Gruka in concert. Part of the Portland Classic Guitar Series, Robert Gruka is an exciting guitarist who performs a wide range of solo, chamber, and concerto repertoire. In recent seasons, he has toured throughout the United States and into Canada. That's February 9th, 8 to 9:30 p.m. at Wigan Hall at Merrillhurst University. For more information, go to clackamasartsalliance.org. And the word of the week? Because I'm a librarian, and you're a captive audience. Okay. We going to pull that up, or, that's okay. Cattywampus. Cattywampus chiefly Midland and Southern United States. It's an adjective. It means skew, awry. Positioned diagonally, cater-cornered. Diagonally, obliquely. Did you know that cattywampus origins date back to the 1830s? We decided to take the shortcut and walk cattywampus through the ball field. A lot of times I use the word when I, when I use the thing, hey, things are going south. I also say, things are really getting cattywampus. So it's kind of sideways, out of alignment. It's a very wonderful word. Thank you, Kevin, because Kevin helps me pick a really unusual word every week. Okay?
Thank you, Martha. And I have one for you for next week.
You?
I'll talk to you later, so it'll be a surprise.
All right.
First, I'd like to commend Commissioner Savas for some work that he's been doing recently. There have been some issues in the Oak Grove Jennings Lodge area with a community planning group trying to get together and figure out how they're going to go forward. And through his efforts, a compromise was able to be put forward where other voices in that community would be brought to the table to help participate in the process under a set of rules and, and guidelines that will, will help them facilitate the process of planning in their community. And I really, really congratulate you on the efforts that you put into that, especially under the circumstances, yeah, we always cross our fingers, but especially under the circumstances with what's going on in your, in your personal life. Yeoman service, and it's, it was, it's very much appreciated. Like Commissioner Schrader, I attended the Milwaukee Centers, or the Milwaukee State of the City, as well as the Canby State of the City, and our cities, quite frankly, are doing well. And the relationships between the county commission and the cities have clearly improved in a number of areas. We still have work to do in outreach to rebuild those relationships, but they are improving dramatically. I'd also point out that our relationship with Metro has improved significantly. During the course of the campaign, when I was running for office, that was a big issue as far as I was concerned, and it had a very pragmatic point of view. During that period of time, which is about two years ago roughly, Metro was passing out $4 million worth of grant money to the various counties. Unfortunately, because of the unfortunate relationship between Clackamas County and Metro, we got none of that money. This year, almost all of the grant applications that our folks have put in to Metro have been funded, and it's a direct result of a change in relationships and working relationship. And I hope And I hope we can push on that a little bit on the transportation issue. If we build those relationships, we should be able to get some support from Metro on, on our transportation concerns. My wife and I took the opportunity this week to do some library visits around the county. So, so far, we've been to four of the libraries. I particularly wanted to go to the Gladstone Library, and there is no question in my mind, after having been there, that they need a new library. So, I am looking forward to, to when we finally are able to break ground and make that happen. I certainly hope that their initiative in their city to, to move this forward goes through, and I will encourage that to occur. And then I look forward to also building the new library in the Oak Grove Jennings Lodge area. And I'll be continuing my tours of libraries to get some ideas of what are best practices. And it's sometimes a little difficult to...
You're just going to talk to me, buddy.
I should talk to you, the librarian, right? I will, I will say that...
No, you should go to see all the libraries.
When I see, when I see the Oregon City Library, I go, all you can do is go, wow, they, they really did a wonderful job there. Attended the Milwaukee Center Spaghetti Dinner and had a good time serving spaghetti to the folks there, and then up to the Hoodlums Woman's Club's crab feed. And on that note, the Hoodland Woman's Club is working on setting up a park district so that some properties that we own up there can be transferred to them, and they will have their own local park. And I'm looking forward to seeing them get that on, on a ballot for their community. I think that pretty much covers it. I will say that I want to thank my Commissioners and frankly Jim for the opportunity to chair today. It's been an interesting experience, to say the least. And on that note, I will move to the dog. This is Canelo. He's a muscled little fellow of about four years who is ready for his forever home. He might not be the guy that runs up to meet you right off the bat, but hold up. Give him a minute or two, and you'll see what a charmer he can be. Since he can be a little shy, he's looking for his home to have kids... The punctuation was terrible there. We're going to have to have a conversation on punctuation. Okay. He can be a little shy. He's looking for his home to have kids that are nine years old or older, maybe a girl dog who's around his sides, but maybe not. He would be cool being your only furry companion, and cats, he's really not a fan of them. Maybe if they're on TV or something, but not in his home. He enjoys heading out for walks with his favorite peeps. Snuggling up to a stuffed friend or two and snacks are really pretty amazing, and gosh darn it, so is he. He really likes his friends at the shelter, but he can't wait to go home soon. Come in and ask to meet him. For more information about Canelo and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. And there being no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.